On your call, Council President.
You may proceed. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your patience. Please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At a good notice that this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act pursuant to Public Laws nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two, three, one. This agenda is complete to the extent known. It was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the first floor bulletin board in City Hall and filed in the city clerk's office. Formal action will be taken. Roll call. Councilwoman Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Let's be honest, twenty twenty-two, he had some things to do with your wife. I was trying to get gender, but sure.
I'd ask that individual mute themselves, please. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Harrison.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams.
Present.
Council President Feliciano.
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, Municipal Clerk, present. Mister Cologi, Legislative Counsel, is present, and Mister Wesley Bridges, City Attorney. Thank you. And Madam President, at this time, if you wish, I will read the invocation.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Certainly. Almighty God, who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this our city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and thy greater good, thy greater glory. Amen.
Amen.
And Council President, at this time, I understand we have some council recognitions, if you wish to announce those.
Yes, Councilwoman Frisbee has two presentations to be made on behalf of council.
If you would bear with us, Madam President, for just a minute. So as we are entering into our Black History Month, I've entered into the Black, the month of Black History. I wanted to begin with honoring those who have given their service and their time to our community, in particular to our city. It is always my goal to say thank you to people while they can smell their roses. So with that in mind, this month and the months to follow, it is my intention to honor those who have given their service of at least twenty years or more, as I find out about them here in City Hall and throughout our community, if you have dedicated your service. With that said, the first individual that I want to acknowledge is someone who has been working in the city in several capacities, has been working her way up, has worked her way up in the city and is doing great things for us and making sure that we actually operate at best capacity as possible. If you need items done in the city when you're needing tables, or just making sure that we're organized when we have events, you need the services of Kim Porter and her department. With that said, the City Council of the City of Trenton, resolution honoring Kim M. Porter. Whereas Kim Porter, a native and proud citizen of Trenton, was raised in Lawrence Township and was educated through the Lawrence Township School System and attended Mercer County Community College and majored in general business. And whereas Kimberly not only took pride in the work she does, that she did, takes pride in the work that she does, but also takes pride in how she and her husband are raising their beautiful children. Whereas Kimberly currently serves as the Management Assistant for the City of Trenton's Department of Public Works, where some of her responsibilities include, but are not limited to, overseeing maintenance and improvements of city properties, supervising a staff of fifty members and seeing aesthetics improvements to city facilities. Whereas Kimberly is credited with thirty years of employment with the City of Trenton that began in September nineteen ninety-three, where she worked for various divisions of public works, including water, including water streets and public property, and assisted administratively with the Department of Health and Recreation, Natural Resources and Culture. And whereas Ms. Porter credits her experience with every division as a tool that has strengthened her knowledge of city operations and gave her the mechanisms needed to become a successful manager. And whereas the City of Trenton sincerely appreciative of the work and dedication of Ms. Kimberly Porter for the outstanding commitment she has shown to our city and its residents. Trenton City Council recognizes Kimberly as a powerful force in the workplace, who uses her knowledge to influence and motivate others, and because of the strong relationship she has with several administrations and the community, she's an asset to the City of Trenton. And whereas the City, and whereas the Trenton City Council is keenly aware that Kimberly is a powerful advocate for the citizens of Trenton and became more involved in the city as ASME Local two-two-eight-six Union, serving as the Secretary for the past three years, and now therefore be resolved that the Trenton City Council proudly recognizes this exceptional woman who has demonstrated her outstanding service and dedication to the City of Trenton, its neighborhood, and the citizens of Trenton, New Jersey, and we thank you, Ms. Kimberly Porter, for your service.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee, and the entire council body for recognizing me. I've met some great people along the way that are more than just coworkers at this point, but they're friends and family. My union family and my staff, I appreciate your support. One of the family members also happens to be my husband. Also like to thank this administration, especially my director, Director Honnery Terry, for pushing me and giving me the support and resources needed to get my job done. Thank you all.
And again, giving people their flowers while they can smell them. This lady I met many years back when my husband and our family first moved to the City of Trenton, and she's the type of woman that when I send her an email and I think she should be asleep at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock at night, she's responding at eleven fifteen, twelve fifteen at night. So she is on point, on top of her game, and I just want you to know, Ms. Darling Herring, you are a jewel, you are a treasure, and I treasure you. I appreciate all the work that you do. And with that, the City Council, City of Trenton, resolution for Ms. Darling R. Herring, whereas Ms. Herring has received several certificates from the George Washington University Center of Excellence for Excellence in Public Leadership for Business Management and Organization, the Mercer Institute of Management and Technology Training through Mercer County Community College for Project Management and for the fundamentals of management and supervision. And whereas Ms. Herring has a professional background with over twenty-five years of experience in municipal government and public administration and has held several positions during her twenty-five-year tenure with the City of Trenton, from Executive Secretary to the Mayor, Administrative Secretary, Senior Clerk Typist, Radio Dispatcher, Senior Clerk Typist, and Clerk Typist, and whereas Ms. Darling is experienced in strategic planning, supervising, and administering department and divisional goals, and whereas Ms. Herring is currently serving as an Assistant Administration, Assistant Administrative Analyst for the City of Trenton's Department of Public Works, whereas Ms. Darling Herring has served faithfully under five mayors in our capital city and continues to be a major resource for moving our community forward with our endless years of wisdom and knowledge. And whereas Ms. Herring's unwavering loyalty, leadership, dedication, support, and professionalism with the City of Trenton has earned her several awards, such as Employee of the Year in two thousand and seven and the Spirit Award in two thousand and eighteen. Her report with current and past administrations has made her a most asset in moving the City of Trenton forward. And whereas Ms. Herring's ability to work under more, under pressure, think outside the box, meet crucial deadlines, remain positive and professional, inspirational, and unique in her techniques, and motivates others, is truly remarkable. Now therefore be it resolved that the Trenton City Council proudly recognizes Darling R. Herring for her twenty-five years, her able, for her able and dedicated work to our great city. We thank you for all you have dedicated these twenty-five years plus, and we wish you, we wish more people of your talent and character served in public office. This is signed by the body of City Council. We applaud you. Thank you, Ms. Darling.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee, for this beautiful token of appreciation. I sincerely thank you and your wonderful council colleagues for your genuine thoughtfulness and generosity. It's truly an honor to be recognized. I would also like to thank Mary Gussiora in this cabinet for giving me a platform within the City of Trenton to be able to perform my duties to the best of my abilities. I would also, I'm truly blessed for each and every one of them. I must say, I'm truly blessed to work alongside some amazing individuals to whom I am privileged to call my bosses and coworkers. Excuse me, therefore, I share this moment with them as well. To Adam, to Jim, to Wahab, to Hector, to Ramona, to Kim, to Paul, to Norma, to Lourdes, Yolanda, Andrew, Lydia, John, Ronette, Hillary, Janet, and the list goes on and on. If it weren't for them and countless others, I wouldn't be standing before you this day. In closing, one thing I can promise, that is, I will continue to strive to be an exemplary employee, a positive role model, and a representative for the City of Trenton. Thank you very much, and God bless you. You two beautiful young ladies will come, we're gonna take pictures with you real quick. Thank you. And I'd just like to take a moment, but anybody, well, I guess y'all could say it when we come back, if y'all want to say something. We'll get the picture first. Thank you.
On your call, Council President.
Please continue.
Certainly. Council President, next on the agenda, we have public comment. If it's your wish, we can begin with public comment, and I'll ask for the public comment clipboard to be brought to the front. All right. And Council President, I have three listed for public comment, just so the public knows, public comment is, there is a five-minute limit on public comment. You may address any item that you wish, but please understand the council is not required to respond. The first person for public comment is Eli Wise. Hit the button.
Can you hear me? Hello. Good to see you all again. Just wanted to give you an update and speak out in support of the pilot for Kingsbury that we've requested and encourage you to vote to support it today, or tonight. We spent most of our day today at Kingsbury with the residents with a, what I think is a very successful resident engagement meeting. We had roughly forty folks. The community room in the east, the west tower there was as packed as I've ever seen it. So it's really nice to see all those residents come down and engage with us. We got an opportunity to take a lot of their questions and give a presentation. Congressperson Williams was there and managed to give a great speech, so we thank you for that. We had some really positive feedback on the new security company that started work two and a half weeks ago, and it'll be exciting to see as the company continues to implement their new strategies, how hopefully pleased everyone is with that. So again, just wanted to let you all know that this is happening, this is real, and we're really excited about it. So as you know, we've requested a pilot, which is a requirement of our HMFA financing, and one of the questions that we got often today was, when can we get to work? And I'm really excited to get to work, and this is one of those items that we need to kick off construction. So again, I would just encourage you to keep that in mind when you're voting tonight. And I'll likely have to leave early, unfortunately, to go back to our second meeting, where I hope to field more comments. So, thank you.
Does any councilperson have any questions, since he has to leave early tonight about the pilot? Now would be the time to ask the question.
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. How are you doing tonight? Thank you for coming again.
No problem.
So, my question, maybe just my own ignorance, you know, towards pilot programs, percentage rates, things of that nature. But I did have what I thought was a concrete question when I read the resolution, and the resolution read that HMFA recommended six-point-two-eight percent for this pilot, and we're talking thirty-two years. And then the same line, comma, the city deemed it fair to give a five percent percentage for this same, you know, pilot percentage. Can you explain that in better detail? As to me, it didn't make sense if HMFA was saying six-point-two-eight percent is recommended, but the city says five percent is fair, and we're given a thirty-two-year pilot. Can you please just explain that in better detail so that people understand what it is that you're asking and what we're doing and what we're trying to provide?
Yeah. So I think some historical context for the six-point-two-eight percent is useful. We, in our, a couple of our bi-weekly meetings with the Subcommittee on Kingsbury, John Murray from HMFA has joined, and he'd supported this, this history lesson, which of course I wasn't alive for, but in the, in the early nineties, they came up with the six-point-two-eight number, as it was an average of the existing pilots on the HMFA portfolio. So there's really no secret sauce, no magic to six-point-two-eight. It's just become a number that is useful because it's common, and at one time it was the average. But I think if you were to talk to someone from HMFA, they would explicitly not make the recommendation for six-point-two-eight. They would tell you that that's a number that a lot of pilots are set at, but that they don't have a position on what the pilot should be. It's really truly up to the city. And the reason that we're asking for five and not for six-point-two-eight is because we're doing a substantial amount of work at Kingsbury, and we're really excited to deliver on all of the things we've been talking about over the last year and more. And asking for five, or receiving five versus six-point-two-eight will just contribute to a larger scope of work for safer, cleaner, more comfortable, more affordable housing for these people for longer.
So just, just for a little bit more clarity, because I'm ignorant to this, this stuff.
Ask away.
So if six-point-two-eight percent was a number in the nineties, and now we're at five, thirty-some years later, you know, make, I mean, I'm just, I don't understand the significance of that. Like, I would think maybe it might have gone up or might have gone, you know, like, but that, that one-point-two-eight percent between thirty-some years, it just doesn't, in my brain, doesn't make sense.
Yeah. I mean, the, the pilot payment is the rate times the gross rent. So as rents trend up, which they will over time, the payments that the building will owe will also, in theory, trend up. So it's, it's not that five percent pilot is less money to the city. It's, in the condition that we're requesting, it's actually increasing the pilot payments. As to why, as to why we're requesting five, it's really for the benefit of the property.
Madam President.
CVP, you done?
Yeah, I want to actually hear what my council colleague has to say. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. So CVP has a very valid question. The difference between the six-point-two-eight percent and the five percent that we have now, I want to highlight so we can get to what she's trying to get to, the six-point-two-eight percent was for the entire property, and the five percent that is being proposed now is for the high rises alone, as per the presentation that we saw last month.
Correct.
The last half of the property for the low rises will be a separate loan, and we're suspecting a separate pilot for that. So in turn, we're getting five percent for the high rises, but we can expect another pilot and another at a, probably a lower percent, being that it's half the amount of units and half the size, or maybe even a quarter of the size of the property for the low rises. So in turn, we could be exchanging the six-point-two-eight percent for something a little higher. But, so can you explain that portion of it, the difference between why we were at six-point-two-eight for the whole property versus where we are right now with two separate loans?
Yeah, I, I can't say why it was at six-point-two-eight percent, because this predates my involvement with the project. But I can say that, as I've, hope I've demonstrated in my presentation two weeks ago, the five percent that we're requesting on the towers alone will increase the revenue to the city over the existing six-point-two-eight that's there today, if the building were actually paying its pilot payments, which it's not. So we're going to deliver immediate increase in revenue to the city at five percent. And then to Councilwoman Edwards' point, our plan is to build another property on the other half of the site, which will, you know, I said it was the cherry on top. It's adding another revenue stream to the, to the city, which all in will increase the revenue dramatically over the current six-point-two-eight.
Right. And to add on to what you said, the pilots that we get, when you're paying property taxes regularly, the library, the school, the state, the city is getting bits and pieces, is being appropriated between these different entities. But for pilots, that's in agreement directly with the city, henceforth, we don't have to allocate that money. That's something that we learned at this past Friday's. That's something that we learned at this past Friday's Subcommittee meeting. Can you give us a little detail about that? Like, what we were getting before under the 6.28%, it was like 140-something thousand. And now under the 5%, just for this half of the property, is somewhere coming around 240, give or take. I can't remember what.
190.
190, way more than what I thought. So that where half of the property, we're already renewing half, twice as much as what we were getting before for taxes. But I wanted to get to the point where all of it stays to trend, stays in trend.
Yeah, it's a good point. Thank you for bringing it up. One of the assets of the pilot law that we're intending to use is that if we were to pay our property taxes instead of a pilot, a portion of those property taxes are going to go to the county, not just the city. Whereas when we make our pilot payments, 100% of that revenue goes right to the city and stays in the city. So not only is the amount of money that we're paying going to go up, but we're also, you know, increasing the efficiency of those dollars for the city.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Director Bridges? Will somebody be here from Kingsbury after executive session, excuse me, to answer any questions that may come up?
I'll be here as late as I can be, and if I need to stay longer, I will.
Then I would like to, Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
In light of this, I'd like to change the agenda. After we finish public comment, I'd like us to then go into executive session.
Is that a motion to move up executive session to directly after public comment?
Yes.
And is there a second?
Some of second.
Moving second, call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa, Vice President Figueroa Kettinberg?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. On your call, Council President.
Thank you. You may continue.
Certainly. Next for public comment, we have Maria Herwig. Thank you.
Good evening.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you. My name is Maria Herwig, and I live at 32 Perrine Avenue. I have a few issues to address on the record. I have a copy of my statement for each council member and the clerk for Carity. I commend Council and Director Richardson for the wonderful improvements at the Trenton Animal Shelter, where I was employed. I thank Councilwoman Jennifer Williams for her meticulous, compassionate, and careful representation. Residents of the North Ward have seen our lives improve. We look forward to her transformational tenure from the ground up. About ordinance 24043, I am elated that Mr. Will Kinsley will be in the Safe Streets Committee. He is a wonderful, selfless citizen of this city. In reference to ordinance 24013, I am terribly concerned about my health. High levels of lead in blood. I have suffered chronic, severe health problems for the last four years, and I would not be surprised if there is a connection, given the information that is coming to surface. I live at the epicenter of contamination, and Director Semple just took notice of this prior to this meeting, so thank you. I applaud council members who try to advocate for their constituents. However, I beg that you do not try to dismiss any summons issued in good faith by city employees doing their jobs. This applies, but is not limited to parking tickets. I hope the city will use all its street sweepers and train staff to have all streets swept, at least weekly. In addition, garbage disposal practices should be enforced for residential and commercial properties. I am somewhat disturbed by the continuous city practice to make very necessary, relevant information very hard to access by the general public. I do not wish to accuse any department on the record. The reality is that there are many services and funds available to many qualifying residents who are totally unaware of our many resources. I beg council to do anything they can to improve this instance. I wrote to the administration with no response, requesting all public system announcements are issued in both English and Spanish. I invite this council to start considering diminishing the sales of city-owned property at a discount to LLCs, especially those based out of our city limits. This has far reaching ramifications, but my time is up. Respectfully submitted, Maria Herwig.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matthew Ochoa?
Hello, everyone. My name is Matthew Ochoa. I'm just here today to bring a little bit of light on food trucks here.
Sir, can you just state your name and address for the record? I'm sorry.
Matthew Ochoa, 475 Hamilton Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey.
Thank you.
No problem. I'm just here, it's my first time. Just wanted to bring a little bit of light into food trucks, into the community. If I could just read something, if you don't mind. As a local business owner and resident of Trenton, New Jersey, I am deeply concerned about the lack of transparency surrounding the cities of the peddler license restrictions. This doesn't affect only me, but countless others who depend on these licenses for their living cubs. Trenton is a home to a vibrant community of entrepreneurs who contribute significantly to our local economics. However, the current opacity around peddler license is stiffing entrepreneurs' spirits. It makes it difficult for business owners to operate effectively in public streets, spaces, parks, and designated areas. The city yet to provide clear guidelines on where we can set up our businesses, which leaves us in a constant state of uncertainty. This lacks the clarity of hinders growth, discouragements, innovations, the ultimate impacts economic vitality of our beloved city. That's all I have to say for today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, I have no more members for public comment. As I understand it, it's your wish to go into executive session?
Yes.
Understood. And correct me if I'm wrong, so I just need the motion to approve 24030, which is authorizing the City Council of the City of Trenton to hold an executive session, which excludes the public. And items are listed, it's my understanding, there is another item, Council President, that is the will of the administration to discuss with you, and that refers to pending litigation.
That's fine, yes.
And Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion, for a motion, please?
May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Some of second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kettinberg?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Listeners, as to whether, how I note that item? Pending litigation with respect to. Good enough? That's it, basically. Thank you. I noted that earlier, so we're good. On your call, Council President.
You may proceed. Thank you.
Council President, I need a motion to come out of executive session.
May I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Is he?
Indisposed.
En route, understood. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Kettinberg?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Council President, if you'd like me to move on forward?
Yes.
Certainly. Moving through the agenda, we, Council President, we have, well, you will have a roll call Thursday for communications and petitions. You will have additional minutes for approval in addition to the ones that have been sent to you. And that would bring us to ordinances. Oh, and reports for Thursday, I'm sorry. Yeah, but they'll vote on those on Thursday. Reports, again, you will vote on Thursday, and if there's no questions with those, Council President, we can move to ordinances for second reading and public hearing.
Proceed, thank you.
Ordinance 24-002, An Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Trenton City Code to Regulate the Use of Fireworks Within the City of Trenton. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, this will be for Thursday, I don't know why I'm asking at this point. There will be a roll call. Ordinance 24-006, Calendar Year 2024, Ordinance to Exceed Municipal Budget Appropriation Limit and to Establish a Cap Bank, NJSA 40A:4-4514, in the amount of $6,811,666.85, I apologize. Council President, if there's no questions on those ordinances, we can move to resolutions.
Continue.
And Council President, are there, if you wish to ask, if there are any resolutions from the docket that the council would like to exclude from a consent agenda?
Council President?
Councilwoman?
I have only 24040 and 24013.
Councilwoman Williams, can you repeat those one time for me? I'm sorry.
Sure. 24040?
Okay.
24013.
013. With the exception of those items and including items listed as added at docket review, are there any other items that need to be excluded from a consent agenda?
Just one minute, please.
I'm sorry?
One moment, I just.
Certainly.
Please. I don't have, I don't want it to be pulled, but I would like, um... Well, no, I'll leave it, because I'll ask the question at the end to the director. Okay, one kind of question.
Oh, it is. Yeah, that's a resolution.
Yeah, I'm good, Mr. Garcia.
I'm sorry?
I'm good.
You're good? Any other members of council? Hearing none, Madam President. We will prepare a consent agenda with the exception of 24-040 and 24-013. And if it's your will, we can move to ordinances for first reading.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
The walk-on?
The walk-on being?
The pilot for Kingsbury?
Um, excuse me, I apologize, the inclusion of the walk-on, thank you. I apologize, there will be inclusion of a walk-on resolution, and that would be for the Kingsbury pilot.
Yes.
And I'm not sure that I have the exact writing of that resolution and the title at this time, but that will be your walk-on resolution, correct?
Yes.
Okay, understood.
That would be a motion to allow the walk.
You're asking for, and that will be now, the motion as opposed to Thursday?
Okay. Actually, no, it could be Thursday, you're right, you're right. Thursday's, Thursday's proper.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute, may I ask a question? Excuse me, point order. I'd like to, if we can, based upon what we discussed, because Councilwoman Williams has questions about the walk-on that she wanted answered out here.
Understood.
I'd like to go ahead, if we can, if that's protocol, to walk it on, so she can ask the question.
If Council President, if you approve it, it can just be added to the agenda today.
Yes, that's what I would like.
Because this is docket review session, so if you approve it, it can be, it could be added to the agenda immediately.
Yes, that's what I would like, added to the agenda immediately, thank you.
We'll have that added to the agenda, with that being the case, I don't believe we need a motion or a second for discussion on that item, right? Understood.
That's correct.
So now then, Councilwoman can ask her question.
Council President, can I just go back to one that I wanted to take off the agenda, I mean, the consent agenda?
Yes.
24-037, I just had a question on that, and I don't, thank you.
Excellent.
To remove from consent agenda, correct?
To take it off of the consent.
Yes, to remove, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
A question came up, and I'd like to ask. One of the things that we did discuss during our, the various meetings the Subcommittee had regarding Kingsbury was about fire suppression systems and sprinklers. And I wanted to make sure, before we have a vote on the pilot, if you could explain how that's going to change for the building and what's going to be installed? Because currently, we do not have ladders that can go up very high at Kingsbury Towers, but also all the hoses have been removed because they were cut, and we have empty fire boxes. So I'd like to have you give us a full explanation of the fire suppression system, would work.
Yeah, the design is not complete, but what I know will be implemented is firstly, the fire pucks that go above every stove that will automatically be triggered at a certain level of heat to put out any fire above the stoves. And fire doors, which will prevent fire from spreading throughout the building. In most modern tower buildings, this is the way that fire is kept away from the apartments and allows for entry and exit safely. But I don't want to say anything on the record, because it's, anything more on the record, because I don't have the final plans in front of me.
Okay, is there a desire to try to put in, at least in the hallways, near elevators, sprinkler system?
I'm not sure about sprinkler, but some sort of fire suppression system that will need code.
Okay, are there any ideas of what that possibly could be, or any options that you can share?
I can, but I would like to give them to you in a different format, just not right now, because I don't want to say something that's incorrect.
So with that, so this is something that you, as your company, as a developer, Kingsbury, is looking to make sure that something is installed to make the building much more safer for residents living there in case there is a fire, particularly, you know, given that it's 19 stories.
Absolutely.
So we can count on that.
Without question.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for him?
Madam President?
Yes.
I think this is more a question for our fire director. Just a quick question, I know something was mentioned that we don't have the trucks with ladders that can reach to a higher altitude to be able to, you know, put out a fire in some of these higher levels in a building like this in Trenton. My question is, do these fire trucks with these ladder capabilities exist? And is that something that we'd be able to, to get in the near future, or, you know, for our city?
One second, before that question is answered, just to be clear, Mr. Cruz, BA Cruz?
I addressed it with Mr. Park.
Okay, thank you. Continue. Then, Mr. Director Douglas, thank you.
Kenneth Douglas, Director, Trenton Fire Department. As it relates to your question, those high-rise buildings that you can't have a ladder truck, the ladder extends all the way up, we do have SOPs related to high-rise structure fires that we have to go into the interior to put those fires out. I think it's maybe about, maybe 10 stories, maybe less than that, because of the angle, the highest 100-foot ladder. It can't go that butt-high, and plus with the outriggers, the thing is that balance the ladder when you have a high-angle ladder, it couldn't go that high, it relates to these buildings. So we would have interior attack on the fire from the going up the stairs, part of the elevator, but we do have an SOP for high-rise fires, to fight those fires.
Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Council President, did you need me to, uh?
Councilwoman Frisbee has a question.
Oh, certainly.
Thank you.
So I have a question about resolution, uh, twenty-four dash zero four eight, for Director Richardson, my question prior to her coming up is, I don't, I want it to be, I don't want to remove it from consent agenda, I just have a question about it. So can I ask the question and just leave it, put it back on consent agenda, or how does that work?
The item can remain on consent agenda, you just happen to have questions about it.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Good evening, Director Richardson.
Good evening.
So in reading, um, resolution twenty-four dash zero four eight, um, which I am ecstatic about, that it is for the HUD Continuum of Care for sub-grant for agreements for those who are disabled, homeless, and families in the city of Trenton who are going through hardship when it comes to rent, rental assistance, leasing, and, um, supportive services. My question is, when I get, and I have got several calls, and I address them with Mrs. Ruth, I, um, enjoy being here, it's good that we are helping out those who are, um, struggling with their rent. My concern is, we have, is there a way of us looking for a grant, since you are so excellent in finding grants for us, for the city, where we can have a place where folks do not have to get to a place of them having, um, foreclosure, not foreclosure? They're getting an eviction notice prior to them getting assistance. I have several seniors who have reached out to me, they are behind, like, two months on their rent, waiting that, till that third month, for them to get that third, um, notice and then get an eviction notice, of course, it's nerve-wracking, because even though we say you'll, you'll get assistance, they don't know that, it's, it's not a guarantee for them. Is there a way of us getting some type of assistance, is there a place that I'm, I don't know of, that I can guide them to, where they're two months behind on their rent, that we can get them assistance, just so they can get caught up and get back on their feet?
Um, good evening, Council Maria Richardson, Recreation and Health. Yes, there are, the city right now doesn't have funds to assist with rent, uh, mortgage payments, right? But there are other organizations in town that are able to do that, I can provide a list to all of you, um, about those organizations. Right now, we are trying to, we are writing a, uh, request for funding to the federal government, trying to see if we are able to get, to help the folks that are behind in their mortgages. During COVID, we had a significant amount of money to help individuals that fell behind in their payments because of COVID-related, um, issues. Unfortunately, at that point, or fortunately, um, there, there were so many different funding sources to do that, that we really were not able to spend all of our money, um, to assist individuals, because they were getting help, uh, from some other funding sources. So, right now, there is a motion before HUD to allow us to use whatever money we didn't spend for COVID, instead of returning, that we will be able to use it for these instances that you mentioned. Thank you. So it would be great if you would place a call to, um, our reps before the federal government to assist this municipality and others in accomplishing that.
Thank you, and I would really appreciate that list.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome, thank you. Mr. Garcia, oh, wait a minute.
Well, I just, because, uh, Director Richardson happens to be, I just had a quick question regarding.
Go ahead.
Twenty-four zero four zero.
Thank you.
And we may be able to move that to consent agenda, um, afterward. Just started, just curious with all the upgrades that are necessary, and I saw, um, the restroom, uh, historic signage, as well as the playground, uh, et cetera, and I'm sure they need it, but can you describe the current condition of some of these items and why they need to be replaced?
Yes, actually, um, I don't know if you remember during the previous meeting, you, you approved the resolution to, um, purchase and install playground equipment there at the Marine Park Terminal, we don't have a playground there, so that would be a whole new thing. Unfortunately, the projects that we have been planning for the Marine Terminal Park will cost us about four hundred thousand dollars. And so for the last two years, we have been applying to DCA, to the local recreation improvement plan. The first year, uh, DCA gave us seventy-five thousand, the second year, seventy-one, that was the money that we used for the playground. We are now applying for a hundred thousand to, um, fix the bathroom and replace the roof. So, um, that's it, right now, at the beginning of the spring, we will install the playground, um, but then we will work on repairing the bathroom facilities and replacing the bathroom, otherwise, we need to continue to use potapots.
What would be the timeline for completion of everything, ma'am?
Well, the playground, we hope to have it installed by the mid, midsummer, just because some of the, we just placed the order for the equipment, so it will take probably three months before we get the equipment, and then that takes about a month to get it installed. Uh, we are just applying for the grant to re- uh, to renovate the bathroom, so that might, by the time that we get the approval, it might be probably in the summer. Whether permitting, we will begin immediately doing that, so I would say the end of the year.
Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Madam President?
One second, Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President, and should you wish, uh, we can move this to, uh, consent agenda.
Right, is your question about this too?
Yes.
Okay, so one second, thank you, Councilwoman Williams, CVB.
Hello, Director Richardson.
Hello.
I did ask this question, but I'm going to be here, you know, your response directly, um, I know that there's funding coming in, I believe by county and state to reinforce the river wall, the riverbank wall, um, along, so will any of this money be utilized for that, or that will be, or that will be solely by county or state, whoever is funding the riverbank reinforcement?
Yes, that would be DOT.
Complete, okay.
Yes.
And the other question is, I know that in that area specifically, where that park is, um, the railings are not very well reinforced, um, I know that a lot of people fish there, I'm not sure if that's where they should be fishing, but people do fish there, I know there's a lot of kids running around. With the creation of a playground in that area, would, would there be some plan to further reinforce the railing area, you know, so that, for the children?
Um, we will be reinforcing the area by the, um, uh, the launch, the, the, oh my goodness, um, the boat ramp, um, if you are facing the river, the part on the left. Uh, the other part, that, we have been in a constant fight with the Army Corps of Engineer, there is an actual project going on there, but unfortunately, we are kind of disturbing what, uh, marine, ri- river life. And so, just the permitting process will take us several years to be able to do any installations on the other side.
Okay, so like, the park on the River Walk, I guess Lamberton Park, whatever it's, River Park, um, you know, I guess with their playground areas are kind of like, um, bricked in, sort of, you know, you have to step up to get out, and.
Yes.
Will, will that be something, maybe, will that be some type of, um, implementation that you'll use down, further down the river then?
Yes, yes, at that part there, um, we have been working on that portion there, but again, every time that you do anything that would disturb the river life, we have to deal with DEP and the Corps of Engineers, and it's, it has been, we have been working there for over six years now. So I don't, I don't see the end of that yet.
Okay, thank you, Director, I just wanted to make sure these things are being considered, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Council President, um, I'm gonna leave it up to you as your will, um, as far as any resolutions that the council may have questions on, or if you'd like me to read through the resolutions in case there are any questions for the directors as they're here this evening.
So who, excuse me, the council person, please, uh, for resolution twenty-four oh thirteen, if you would ask your questions?
Yes, ma'am, uh, it's actually, we're, so it's my mistake, uh, but, uh, so it will have a roll call, but I did have some questions on that, but I can wait until we actually vote, if that's necessary, or I could handle it now, because I think, um, um, gentleman from the, uh, bond, uh, section is here with us tonight.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, um, so, and actually, it was a two-part question for, um, Mr. Sample, as well as, um, with, um, a gentleman from the bond, uh, department, and just regarding this, uh, it's a substantial amount, ten million dollars. So the questions I know I'll be getting asked is, uh, first of all, uh, where would the, um, lead lines be getting taken care of, is it spread out throughout the city? Because it's a large number, one thousand to one seventeen hundred, hopefully, we'll get to the seventeen hundred. And then the second part has to do with, uh, making sure that the sidewalks that are, um, taken out regarding, uh, installation of the new lead line, uh, removing the lead line, replacement of the proper line, that those sidewalks are properly replaced with cement or brick? Because, um, people are still complaining about that, that that has not been done in the past.
Uh, Madam President, if I may, good evening, Council, Adam Cruz, Business Administrator, um, the bond council is here, and I know that her first question is regarding the ten million dollars and why is it that it is so much? Replacing lead lines is not a cheap project, um, you were there when the project was taking place, and it takes millions and millions of dollars. So, for this purpose, I had asked, uh, the, uh, bond counsel to actually be here, so he can, he can explain to you what the ten million dollars are, and it also, it's also related to an I-Bank application that we have put in as well. So he can explain that as well, so that the council can understand, I believe this is the first time that this council is being presented with something like this, so I want to make sure that you understand the process, so that moving forward, um, you know, you have a better understanding, so.
Appreciate that.
So, uh, Mr. Everett Johnson. And Sean will then address the sidewalks.
Good evening, Council President and members of the City Council, my name is Everett Johnson, I'm bond counsel to the city of Trenton, uh, shareholder at the law firm of Orleans Goldman Spitzer. Um, as, uh, the administrator Cruz mentioned, that the city plans to borrow ten million dollars to finance, it's going to be phase four of the lead line service replacement program of the city. Um, the city finances its, uh, debt to finance lead service lines through a program, um, offered by the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank. It's a, uh, state, um, entity that provides financing for clean water and drinking water projects throughout the state. The benefits of going through the state program are the interest rates, and in this, in this case, principal forgiveness. Generally speaking, uh, debt issued through the infrastructure bank is financed fifty percent interest-free, and then fifty percent at the I-Banks AAA credit rating, uh, which is the best credit rating that, you know, can be offered in the market. Whereas if the city sold the debt directly on its own, it will be paying interest on a whole entire amount, and at a much lower rating, so you're paying a lot more interest in debt over time. With regards to lead service lines, because of the public health benefits of replacing lead service lines, and the urgency of it, uh, they have a special program where they provide principal forgiveness. It's my understanding that, and the reason why this is being rushed, they were told, the city has been told that if they close on a loan with the, um, infrastructure bank before June thirtieth of this year, that five million of the ten million will be forgiven by the state. So you, you have to borrow the ten million, and I say borrow meaning, you have to sign a note, uh, with the state for ten million dollars, but you have to pay back five million of that. And the balance of the five million, uh, will be either at seventy-five percent interest rate, interest-free, or fifty percent interest-free, either way, uh, it's a real good financial benefit to the city financing to this program. So that's why this ordinance is before you today, because of this sense of urgency of having two readings of the ordinance, and then, does that amount of adopting the orders and closing tomorrow, there are other documents and requirements of the state that be met, so that we can sign off a note prior to June thirtieth, to avail the city of, of the five million dollar principal forgiveness to assist in their replacing lead service lines. Uh, I'm not sure if, uh, if there's any questions or anything else that I missed that you wanted me to elaborate on, uh, but I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have, if any.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President, so I just would like to ask you, Mr. John, thank you, you're always so thorough, uh, what part of the ten million dollars will be forgiven, hopefully, it'll be the, the middle part?
It's five million dollars of the principal, so I don't think, they, they don't know, like, it's not related to specific lead lines.
Okay.
In general, they're just saying, you borrowed ten million dollars, we're going to forgive five million to ten million dollars. How that ten million dollars are utilized in what areas, that's more the, the water departments, uh, and DEPs.
I guess I meant, um, because I, when you're in, from my notes, uh, fifty percent of the borrowing will be at regular interest rate, market rate?
So, no, uh, in this case, normally, that's the case, in this particular case, since five million dollars is going to be principally forgiven, the five million dollar balance, fifty percent of that amount will be interest-free.
Okay, interest-free, and then at the AAA interest rate?
Correct.
Okay, so the part that we will have to pay back, uh, would be at the AAA rate?
That is correct.
Okay, what is that currently, sir?
Say it again?
What is that rates currently?
So, I can tell you, but the reality of it is not, I'll be kind of misleading you, because the way the state works, this program works, you have to do a, a note, which is a short-term borrowing for three years, and that's usually at a, up until two years ago, was a zero percent, but now it's like point four percent. And then they go out and do a bond issue when the projects are all completed, along with a bunch of other borrowers, and so the question that is not really what the rate would be today, is really what the rate is going to be in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, when you actually have to go out, when they issue the bonds. So, who knows what it'll be at that point in time, but whatever it is, it'll be much better than the city's rate when they go, if they were to go out on their own.
Okay, that's good to hear, thank you. Okay, Council President?
Thank you, any other questions, Council? Thank you.
Thank you so much. While I'm here, I'm sorry, there's a, there's a resolution on here, I guess you guys saw the consent agenda already, so I didn't speak of that at all. So, your ordinances are also approved by the state local finance board, so there's an application that we have to submit for each bond ordinance, so there's a resolution that is on the agenda that authorizes the submission of the, I think it's, uh, forty-seven? So that basically authorizes submit the ordinance down local finance board for approval, related to this bond ordinance, so to make sure you guys have any questions about that while I'm up here, I'll answer that too. If not, I'll happily sit down and take my seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Sean Sample, Director of Water and Sewer. So the question is, is concerning the restoration process?
Yes, uh, the restoration process, um, once the work is completed, going back to the sidewalk, uh, or brick in some of our neighborhoods, but also, uh, do you have an idea of what neighborhoods or what parts of the city will actually, you know, be taken care of? Because, uh, thousand lines versus seventeen hundred lines is a big difference, and certainly, we're hoping for the seventeen hundred to be done.
So, Councilwoman, the cons- when it comes to the contractor restoration process, that is included in their, in their whole bid process, the whole contract? If I'm not mistaken, there's a difference between what is done by Trenton Water Works and was done by the contractors. So the contractors should be at least ninety percent complete with their full restoration. We still have bond money that we have ho- holding for them in case they haven't made their obligations, so if there's any out there, please let me know, let us know, so we could go after them. We've been getting complaints here and there about contractors' work. Now, the, when it comes to the work that is done by Trenton Water Works, it's been many years since we had bonded into, roadway restoration is very expensive, after, but whether it's on the road or the sidewalk, it's upwards of two million dollars a year in restoration costs. That is something that we have to bond for, I know Mr. Cruz might be surprised at me saying this tonight, but that's another aspect that we have to look into. We cannot, uh, do the restoration based on our operating budget, so this is a capital expenditure, and I just had a meeting yesterday with our consultant, uh, in terms of our bonding or what we have to bond, so we can be coming to your office on more money to do restoration. It hasn't been done in the last three years, to be honest with you. So is, that's the estimated cost for the restoration, that's going, is, is going to cost us that much. So, what we've been doing, as people complain, we try to do little jobs at a time, but to get the whole, all the restoration done back, going back three years, it's going to cost a lot of money. And like I said, Mr. Cruz didn't know this is yet, but, uh, I'll be talking to him about getting some bonding to do these restorations, because that's the only way we can do in capital expenditures, to get the restorations done.
Thank you so much, that's very, that's really interesting to hear, because that's a big question, and even in, with the contractors that we hire, or is it in the contract that they must do restoration, or is that an extra budgetary item that we have to cover?
For the lead lines? For the lead lines, it's included in the contract.
If I could expand this actually to even regular streets, like if you have, we have to go into a street and tear up the street, because a lot of places, you know, we see the asphalt in the middle, it's like a line, and sometimes PSCNG does that. And we may, you know, have to figure out, maybe through an ordinance, how to force PSCNG or any contractors in the city to give a full restoration curb-to-curb.
Yes. It depends on the nature of the job, how much damage is done. We have to restore in kind, the same way. But like I said, it's very expensive. And we have, we contract that out every year, but it's upwards of $2 million a year for just to do restoration, not just in the city, in the townships, too.
But if, when it comes to hiring a contractor, say they go to Vine Street and they do work there, are they required to replace the asphalt curb-to-curb? Or they're only required to replace the asphalt where the work occurred?
That depends on the moratorium of the road. If the road is less than five years, we're required to replace it in kind. Depends on the Public Works Director. Most likely, it's road, curb-to-curb, or we do thermal, thermal restoration, whereas we heat the asphalt up. It's done very, it's a good process. But it depends on the age of the road.
All right, thank you. Because I'd love to chat with you further about Chase Street. That was, it's a very big problem in my ward particularly. Thank you, sir.
Not a problem.
Thank you, Council President.
Madam President.
Yes, Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, starting with, how long do we have to pay back the bond? And how many lead lines will be replaced with this $10 million budget? And also, to Councilwoman Williams's point, I would love to see as we're tearing up our roads to replace these lead lines and PSCNG with their service lines and things like that, for the curb-to-curb replacements to be included in the budget, because we shouldn't have to wait several years after these roads are torn up for them to be replaced. The five years or less, I get that, but again, we, it causes a lot of damage to vehicles, having to drive on these types of conditions. So I just wanted to reemphasize her point on that, making curb-to-curb a part of it in the very near future. But how many lead lines will be replaced with this? And how long do we have to pay off this budget? Oh, the bond also, do we still have a surplus with Trenton Water Works? Sorry, it's like a triple question. Do we still have a surplus? How long do we have to take on the bond? How does that, how does that kind of correlate, if it does?
So I can answer the question about the length of paying back the bonds. It'll be 30 years, you'll have to pay back the debt on the $10 million. In terms of the surplus, I'll defer, I'm at the auditor, the accountant, so.
$5 million after this forgiveness?
Oh, I'm sorry, $5 million.
And how, how long does that take, too, to forgive?
You're right.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was, missed your question.
So you said 30 years to pay back the bond?
Correct.
And that's after, that's, that's $10 million altogether. You said $5 million will be forgiven?
So it'll be $5 million you're paying back.
Right. So when will the $5 million be forgiven?
It'll be forgiven once all the lead service lines are replaced and prior to the bonds actually being issued by the state.
How long will it take for the lead lines to be replaced?
I'm not the construction guy.
I guess we're kind of trying to put the puzzle together here.
According to the DEP regulations, by 2031, we have to have all lead line service replacements in the city, which means that we have to do 10% each year. Now, if I remember, you all approved the 5.5 federal grant. That gives us 700 service lines. So the 10 is going to give us about 1,200 to complete our quota for this, for this year, between last year and this year. And then next year, we have to come back again. So we have up to 2031 to complete them all. Now, I can't give you exactly how much lead line service we have in our system. We're doing that survey right now, and it's ongoing, because we never have a history of what is on the homeowner's side. We have the histories on what's on the utility side. So right now, we go in house, house to house, and we asking residents to let us in, so we can have an accurate count as we go along. Right now, we're actually doing the survey for the federal grant. And if people let us in their houses, it will help us tremendously.
Awesome, thank you. So the $5 million will be done, will be forgiven upon completion of the project? The expenditure of this $10 million or the whole lead line service 2031?
No, it'll be on a phase-by-phase basis. As I mentioned earlier, this is Phase Four. And so the way the, the program works, when I mentioned before you entered to a short-term note, the note is basically, matures within three fiscal state years. So you basically have three years after you sign the contract. So the, I guess I'm into the weeds now. So you borrow the money, you have two years from the time borrowing money to sign the contract, but the contract is to replace the lead service lines. After that date, then you have three fiscal years after that to actually replace everything before the note matures. If the note matures, and you have spent, let's say you only spend $7 million of the $10 million, well, let's go back to, I know we have $5 million, but my example, assume it's $10 million. Then they will basically say, okay, you spent $7 million of the money, then you can only bond for $7 million. The other $3 million, you didn't, you didn't pull out. Because they don't give you the money upfront. It's a drawdown loan. So even though you closed for a certain amount of money, as, as the work is done, you draw down that money once the work is done. So they don't just give you $10 million upfront. So you basically have that three-year period to spend $10 million to fix everything. Whatever you don't spend when the note matures, that's all you can spend. And then they'll finance that particular phase at that point in time. Then in Phase Two, there's a different, a different clock that starts. This is Phase Four, and so Phase Four is going to be a different timeframe than Phases One and Two, in terms of when you're going to be bonded. So I would say, if you had a good guesstimate, at least 2027, 2028 is when the bonds would occur. But if they move faster, which I suspect they will, it could be 2026. Remember that, when I say in six, the state has a fiscal year. So right now, we're in state fiscal year 2024, but July 1st is state fiscal year 2025. So if they finish everything on July 1st, 2025, you're in a 2026 fiscal year for the state.
So basically, we have 10 years to, I mean, three years to spend down this $10 million.
Yes, three years for the date that you sign the contract. So if the contract is signed next month, you have three years for next month. If it's signed in November, you have three years from that time. So it all depends on when, when I say contract, I mean, the contract with the actual contractors that will replace the lead service line, the actual people you guys hired to do the work.
Okay. I think that was all of my questions.
Council President.
Madam President.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I don't know who's first.
Yeah, just. Gonzalez, and then Councilwoman Frisbee.
So my only question was just for the public, just to educate the public. I know you shared with some of us at our community meetings that we've been having, but can a resident call in and let you know that they think that they have a lead line, and then you will come out, send someone out? So they can actually call in and schedule someone to come out, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that would probably help. I just.
That will help us tremendously, because people are not trusting in these times, and they won't let you in their houses. And we need to do, we need to get access to make sure everyone lead line is replaced.
Thank you.
So I just have a quick question about the drawdown. Hypothetical, if we don't draw down the whole 10 mil, let's say we're using 10 million right now, and does that affect, let's say we only get to eight, eight or nine, does that affect the next phase? This is only Phase Four, so is that going forward, will they not allow us to draw down then on the full 10, on an additional 10, if, let's say, that's the next amount? Or will they say, well, you only used eight previously, so that's all that will be at your disposal?
So usually, when you finance up to the I-Bank, it's not in phases, usually a one project, so it's an easy answer. The project's done, you don't need to draw down anymore, or it's too late to draw anything down. But because you have phases, I can't speak for the state to say yea or nay, but it's a strong impetus to get lead service lines replaced. So if there was any time for leniency, it would probably be for this type of project. But let's not try to find that out. Let's try to get everything done on time, so we're not, you know, have any money laying around. But I will say, you only pay back what you borrow. So if you only borrowed, drawn out $8 million, you only pay back $8 million, even though you authorized 10 initially. So that's the one good thing about the bond program. You're only paying back what you pulled down.
Thank you. We don't leave money on the table.
Can I answer a question? Thank you. So, about the money. So, we're saying 10 million right now. We said that if we sign by June 30th, we get the forgiveness of X amount of dollars. If we don't use the 10 million, we still sign by June 30th? We use eight, do we still get the forgiveness?
Yes. Fifty, well, 50%, 50%.
Right.
It's 50% of the amount you borrow.
Right.
So it was eight million, then I guess you get $4 million, because it's 50%.
Right, okay, thank you.
Up to 50%, cap that $5 million.
Okay, thank you.
But every year, they change the program, so. That's why I want to get it in now.
Councilman Harrison?
My question is regarding, do you guys, do like a lid drop regarding like a letter sent out to the homeowner saying, hey, call this number, you know, letting them know? Are you doing that?
Mike Walker is actively involved in sending out. Listen, I've told that people have never received so much mail from the water utility until now.
Right.
So we plan to continue that.
No, but I'm saying, they're targeting yours. Okay, they are, thank you.
Any more questions, Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Council President, at this point, if there are no other questions on any additional resolutions, we are at ordinances for first reading.
One second. We do have a question. Councilwoman Gonzalez had a question about Resolution 24037.
It was a really quick question, just because I was under the impression at the last meeting that we were not going to accept any more of the cannabis applications. And I wanted to know, was this one included in that 10 that we said we were capping at, or was this the 11th?
This is part of the 10?
This is part of the 10.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, that was my only question, so we can put it on consent.
So just to be clear, for 24040, 24013, 24037, we are good with them being on consent?
Just a point of clarity, the 013 is actually an ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. All right.
All right, so that will be just the exclusion of 24040 and 24037, correct? Understood. On your call, Madam President.
No, 24037 can put that onto consent agenda.
I'm sorry.
Yes, so it's just 24.
Okay.
Madam President.
040.
040 can be put on consent.
Right, that's one there, too.
So those are back on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, understood. Understood. On your call, Madam President.
You may continue.
Thank you. We are at ordinances for first reading. I'll go through the titles of ordinances first reading, which obviously will require a roll call. Ordinance 24-007, ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton, traffic, four-way stop intersections as it applies to Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and Ingham Avenue. Ordinance 24-008, capital ordinance providing for improvements to the ways to West State Street, San Heeken Drive Improvement Project 11 by the City of Trenton and the County of Mercer State, New Jersey, appropriating $1,309,938 to pay for the cost thereof, which amount will be funded by a grant from fiscal year 2024 municipal aid program received or expected to be received by the City from New Jersey Department of Transportation. Ordinance 24-009, ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton, traffic, one-way street as it applies to Hale Avenue. Ordinance 24-010, ordinance continuing certain positions, fixing salary ranges, therefore, and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of same analyst, trainee, assistant purchasing agent, senior purchasing agent, senior program development specialist, aging, and yard supervisor. Ordinance 24-11, an ordinance to revise certain positions, fixing salary ranges, therefore, and setting forth certain regulations for the implementation of same administrative secretary, employee benefit specialist, paralegal specialist, account clerk, senior account clerk, principal account clerk, management assistant, sanitary driver. Ordinance 24-12, ordinance amending and supplementing Section 150-3 of the Trenton City Code relating to penalties for illegal dumping. And ordinance 24-13, bond ordinance providing for Phase Four of the Lead Service Line Replacement Program in the Trenton Water Works Service Area by the City of Trenton, County of Mercer State, New Jersey, appropriating $10 million, therefore, authorizing the issuance of $10 million for bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. I'm sorry, that was added at doc review. I believe we've gone through the other resolutions, and that would move us to, if there are no questions regarding the ordinances, that will move a specific comment, Madam President.
Are there any questions from Council regarding any of the ordinances? All right, let's go ahead on to civic comment.
You're in, Madam President, if it's your wish, whoever you'd like to start with for public comment.
Thank you. Councilwoman Edwards.
Thank you.
Civic comment, sorry. Go ahead. My apologies.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I will keep my comments very brief. I don't really have many today, other than to say about the Kingsbury project, thank you to my council colleagues for, you know, walking us on today, as it's very pertinent to get this project to fruition. Us approving a pilot is the next step in the process. And after they have an approval of a pilot from us, they will be revisiting HMFA as per the next steps in the process of their application. They will be going forward to the Board of HMFA for them to review everything that they have, that they've done with all of their renovation renderings and the deferments from us, the pilots from us, and things like that. And I wanted to highlight that the deferments that we did for our utilities for sewer water and for the taxes or the payment in lieu of taxes that they outstandingly owe us, those have been deferred for us to be paid in full at the closing of this loan. So the quicker that we get this done, the quicker that they can close So the quicker that we get this done, the quicker that they can close on this loan and the quicker that the residents of Kingsbury can start to see improvements of their quality of life and their living conditions. So I just want to say thank you in advance for supporting this. Thank you to my council colleagues on the subcommittee, Councilwoman Williams and Councilwoman Frisbee. We have been, we went from biweekly meetings with the Kingsbury, Kingsbury and Company to weekly meetings over the last month or so. I haven't been able to make every last single one of them, but these meetings have been played an integral part in getting them moving forward in this process. So I want to say thank you to council as a whole and to my other two colleagues for spending your Friday afternoons with this and to every other person and entity, HMFA, DCA, the HUD or whoever else is at the table with this, with seeing this project come to life. Because for this to have gone on for so long, you know, we were really doing our city a disservice. So I'm glad that everyone is at the table. And I think that that is it. And oh, also on the consent agenda, for myself, asking for your support formally to be the liaison to the Cannabis Advisory Board. 24-031 is for me to be appointed, so I'd appreciate your support this upcoming Thursday. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President Figueroa Kattonberg.
Good evening, everybody. I really don't have anything tonight. I just want to say that I'm appreciating the position that I have in leadership because I really did get a great understanding being in doc review and being able to ask questions of the administration and, you know, getting answers from my colleagues as well. I definitely appreciate the clarity and understanding with regards to Kingsbury. I was not on board. But, you know, given the process and everything that has happened, I do believe that what we were, what we are projecting to do will be the best thing for the city, for Kingsbury and for those residents. And that's really all that I have for this evening. Thank everybody for coming out. Have a good night.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Good evening and thank you, Council President. So I'm not going to go through everything that Councilwoman Edwards said. I echo her sentiments. The weeks that we have spent, the months that we have spent on Kingsbury has been well worth it to see things actually moving. These are our residents. These are, this is our community. This is what we're up here doing all of this for, is to make sure that we move our city together. We're doing our due diligence. Having been in these meetings, I've learned a lot. And I'm glad to see things are finally progressing. It's good to see movement. It's good to see conversations. Like Eli said, it is good to see how folks are starting to come out more. And they're seeing that there is, people are actually concerned about what's going on. And it's not just clamor, it's not just talk, but we're actually about the business of our city and they matter. It's not just of them, it is our community. So I'm excited about what we're about to move this pilot I am grateful for so that we can actually get them to see where we are actually going to start, where they can see the visibility in their own homes with the demolitions and so on and so forth. So I'm excited about that. I did want to address Mr. Ochoa who was here earlier, but he did leave, so I will reserve that for now, but it is, I'll leave that for now. I do have a flyer from Children's Future. They are having a fundraising bowl-a-thon to support maternal and infant mortality awareness throughout. And this is going to be in, at Mooresville Lanes on Nolan Avenue. If you want more information, I will have a flyer at the back, or you can just come and see me about this flyer. Also, there is a flyer for FBI jobs, 2025 honorees internship program. And this is a paid internship program. Again, there will be, there's a flyer for that as well. That application is opened, open on February 12th and they close March 1st. There is a QR code on the application here. If anyone wants to scan that, it is for our young adults. Great program, especially if you're getting, it's a 10-week paid internship course. If your children, young folks are saying they don't know where to go, they don't have anything to do, here's a good way to get them some money in your pocket and out of your pockets. Now accepting new students, let's film a free after-school program. And this is with the James R. Halsey Foundation. This is on Wednesday nights from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. It is a comprehensive year-round film media educational program for youth ages 14 to 18. Those who have a strong interest in filmmaking, this would be something that you would want to have them get into. Again, there was a a QR code here and that's going to be held at 535 East Franklin Street here in our beautiful city. And finally, Foundation Academy is celebrating their schools, is celebrating their scholars this Friday, February 9th. They asked that we would join them for their 100 men welcome on Friday, February 9th at 7:00 AM. Not PM. AM. Get up right early and just come out if you can and encourage them. This is in Spanish and in English for those of you who might be interested, and I have several copies of that. And finally, I don't have the other flyer. I'm hoping that someone else will. Councilwoman Gonzalez with the VITA program that we've been talking about, that is to help those who need help with their taxes getting done for free. So don't have it with me. I apologize, but it is out there. You can Google it. You can look on our city website and it will come up, but it's the VITA program and it will help you if you need help. There is a tax bracket, I believe it was 65,000 or under, you can get your taxes done for free. With United Way, that's right. Thank you, Councilwoman Williams, with United Way. So with that, I'm going to read our city's mission statement, which is to recognize that the people of Trenton have made us guardians of the public trust. We are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility, to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all of the city's people with respect and compassion. We thank all of you for coming out. Thank you, everybody. Get home safely. And thank you, of course, to our directors and all of you stood before the podium tonight who answered our questions so diligently. Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. First, thank you. I'm going to be fast when we get out of here on record timing. Thanks to everyone who was present and who spoke before us, and I want to say congratulations to those who are honored. There are, all of our city workers are phenomenal workers, but it's always great to just acknowledge and let people know that we, some people go above and beyond. And so I just want to say congratulations to those two young ladies. Also, congratulations and kudos to my colleagues and to the residents and everyone who worked really, really hard on the Kingsbury project. As, you know, this is the first phase of us actually helping our residents out there in that neighborhood. And I just want to say thank you because I know there was a lot of hard work and time dedicated to that. And to the residents who I heard, you know, they had a number of people come out who have been engaged in a part of the process also. So thank you to those residents who were part of this change, part of this project. To Ms. Maria, she left out, but I wanted to let her know that I am currently working on an ordinance for things to be disseminated in English and Spanish. We are kind of in the back and forth phases of it with the legal department. As it would be a slow process, but hopefully we can make that happen soon for the Latino population. And hopefully in the near future, we will include other languages as well, but we're starting off with English and Spanish currently. Take advantage of calling the Trenton Water Department, as we stated earlier. Please, if you, if you know that you need your lines replaced, you can call and schedule an appointment. They will come out to see you. So thank you, Director Semple, for that and for your department, because they do send out those newsletters and it's very informative. And you guys are present in the community at our discussions that are going on and a lot of information shared. So we want to say thank you to you. Capital Health is hiring, so please, you could visit their website, website, and then you can type in whatever field you're looking to find a job in, and it will pop up. I believe she said there was over like 400 positions that they're looking to hire. So if anyone is looking for a job, you can visit the Capital Health website. And to Councilwoman Frisbee, she mentioned the VITA program. If you make $65,000 or less and need help filing your taxes, there are different locations throughout the city who will have that program up and running, so you can visit the city website for that information. And also, I know she mentioned an after-school program. Please take advantage of our free recreational centers that are beautiful and full of things for our kids to do. We hear a lot of things that are, a lot of complaints that our kids don't have anything to do. We have recreation centers throughout the city of Trenton and all students are welcome. Please, please take advantage of that. And just a couple of events. We had the Puerto Rican Parade, who will have their dance on February 10th. And also we have the NAACP who will be hosting their next event, and that is also in February, February 10th, I believe, February 10th at Cooper's. So these are two events coming up. There's several events going on, so just, you know, be mindful, check everyone's social media pages. And a big shout out to our hometown hero, Jair Brown, one of my unsung nephews that I called from childhood. Tig will be playing in the Super Bowl starting this weekend. So please, everyone, enjoy all your Super Bowl parties responsibly, but let's, let's root for our hometown hero Tig. Shout out to you. Good luck. And thank you all for being present tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Harrison?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to first start off by thanking my colleagues who worked really hard on the Kingsbury. Your, your hard work is truly supported by all of us up here. And we'd like to say it's wonderful to see that Ms. Darlene and Ms. Kim recognized are two wonderful city employees. Ms. Darlene, not only is she a wonderful artist, but she always has a smile on her face and she's so kind to everybody. And Kim, what can I say? She's a woman, she's a wonderful hard worker and she's always working hard for her staff and she's a blessing. Let's see, what else do I want to say? Oh, I wanted to say we did an illegal dumping cleanup and I, with Ms. Octavia, Aziz, Bernard, Matthew, Jeannie, the College of New Jersey, we did Prince Street and we did Morton Alley. So if you go on Facebook, check out NIA, the Neighborhood Improvement Association, you'll see the wonderful work that we did. Thanks, Wally, and his wonderful staff that came out there and with the dumpster. So hey, it's all a team effort, right, Wally? It's all about working for the city. So I want to say thank you all and have a blessed evening.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Council President. Just want to say real quick, I really appreciate Councilwoman Edwards, Councilwoman Frisbee's comments. They said it very eloquently. I'll just add to it that it was extremely heartening today to be at the first meeting and see the room filled with residents had questions, but they, you could see that they felt empowered. And I was very full of pride that it came together, just brought me back to about a year ago when all seven of us and the mayor toured Kingsbury. And early on, it was obvious that this issue and all the issues in that building wouldn't take one councilperson. It would take seven councilpeople. And I can't thank my, all my colleagues enough for never giving up in their encouragement on solving this and as best as we can from the government side to get it right. And I believe that we've put this pod project and our city in a good position to get it right. Also, I'd like to just say I really appreciate Maria Hurwitz's comments earlier. They're very nice. But she also did bring up some very important concerns that we should consider in the future, particularly as we go forth. Just want to say one of the resolutions has to do with trees this week. For natural resources, we have a huge problem with trees that need to be trimmed or taken down, unfortunately asteries because of bacteria. So that's really great that that's going to happen. One announcement this Friday for Black History Month, there's going to be a special event for emergency providers in the Health Expo from 12 to 2:00 PM. So please spread the word on that, particularly so people have a chance to meet some of their emergency responders, but also if they have any health issues or just want to get an idea of how they're doing, to come out to the Health Expo. Finally, and I wanted to use the remainder of my time to ask Director Wilson to come to the podium. Just wanted to ask him to explain because there are some concerns in the public, some misinformation potentially. But what is the actual standard operating procedure for when the Trenton Police Department's called to respond to maybe a person that has a mental health issue or may need assistance? Just so that we all know what that looks like and what it's supposed to be, just in case.
Steve Wilson, Trent Police Director. Our standard operational procedures for responding to mental health actually depends on how that call is received by our dispatch center. A call of somebody who's suicidal, the response is different than someone who's running in the middle of the street, obviously. What we do here in the city of Trent, calls are different than in the township. They have services that we don't have at the moment, and that's, one of the services is called Arrive Together. I'm looking to get that here. However, to get to how we respond to those calls, the operational procedure is to have one officer that responds, make contact with the, with that person that's in crisis. This is trained biannually in our de-escalation training. Mental health encounters are part of that training.
Would they ascertain at the situation whether additional help was necessary or what type of assistance?
Yes, each, each call is treated differently because there are so many different issues concerning mental health. Some involve addiction, some involve actual issues, schizophrenia or suicidal tendencies. So we, when we respond to those things, services are offered to the folks that need to help. The services that are at hand here in the city.
Ben, when you do, when officers do respond, the person that they're responding to, checked on, et cetera, that person's legally allowed to refuse any assistance. Is that correct?
Yes. Some responses, that's absolutely correct. We cannot force people to get help. We cannot force people into crisis. Only crisis personnel can do that. And that, even that is only on a temporary basis. Depending on the call, other emergency first responders may be called out, such as the fire department and EMS.
Okay. And then my final question, and I really appreciate you taking the time to do this because I know even in the North Ward, we've had issues particularly with a person on North Olden Avenue or Brunswick over the winter time. It was this tough situation. And multiple times, emergency responders had to try to speak with this person, convince them to actually accept help. Quite often, is it, or should I say, is it often in these situations that the person refuses help? Or is it the opposite where most times they actually do accept help?
Unfortunately, most often.
Director, I apologize. You have, I know there's been an exchange here, but at the same time, I have to abide by the same rules for everybody. So it is, that, that is your time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did not realize that. My bad.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Just end there. Unfortunately, most times, they don't, they refuse, but we stay at it and we stay with them.
Thank you, Council President and Mr. Clerk.
Certainly. Sorry about that.
I was saying, let her finish. Okay, thank you, Mr. Garcia. Okay.
I just have to treat everybody the same.
He's back.
I was the youngest of seven. You get a molly.
All right. You're welcome. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for staying. Thank you for being here, for your active participation in tonight's meeting. I just want to be brief. Thank you to my council colleagues, again, that worked on the Kingsbury meetings and everything to get us to the point where we can move this forward to see something good come of this project. So we're happy to get to this point. I did meet with Dr. Pamela Prowit the week before last over at Capital Health at the Institute for Urban Care, where they're doing a phenomenal job with so many different things that I wasn't even aware of. She's going to be coming here to do a presentation on February 20th so that council can hear some of the things that they do. So if we've not heard it already or not familiar with it, she has been scheduled to appear. Black History Month is here, right? It's been here. So happy Black History Month to all of us that celebrate the month. Mercer County Community College, the James Kearney Campus is having a slew of events that they are hosting weekly at the college. So I encourage you to check online and see what they have going on. Let me see. Anyone that has an organization or a business that wants to give money to Trenton Central High School seniors, I encourage you to please donate to our students. They are phenomenal. I'm a part of the annual scholarship program that'll be coming up in June. So we definitely want people that can to give. There's no amount too small. Book scholarships, full scholarships, whatever it is that you can do, help us to celebrate our students and to help them along. Lastly, excuse me, on Thursday, at our Thursday meeting, Councilwoman Gonzalez and I, along with council, will be honoring the Divine Nine, the Black Greek sororities and fraternities. They will be here with us. We are honoring the National Pan-Hellenic Council, the Mercer Region. So, you know, for the tremendous work that we all do, Councilwoman Gonzalez and I are actual members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, Trenton Alumni Chapter. So it's our honor to present the Pan-Hellenic Council with the honor during this time. That being said, thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. God bless and good night.
Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to adjourn?
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have to go through a roll call. Thank you. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Councilwoman Figueroa Kattonberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
And Council President Feliciano. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.